Good morning, we'll officially call this meeting to order. First order of business, everybody get a chance to read the minutes, any discussion on that?
No discussion here.
You got a motion on that?
I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes from last month.
And a second? Motion and a second, all those in favor approve minutes, motion approved, alright. Also want to say thank you to my colleague here for holding down the fort while I was gone for
My pleasure.
For two months.
He did a very good job.
Good, you can have the job. Alright, let's get over here. First item on the agenda. Put my white piece of paper up here. ZV 5655, 124 Carteret Road, consider variance to the Glen County zoning ordinance section 611. Off-street automobile parking requirements at 124 Carteret Road, parcels 03-09800 and 0309801, property is zoned, office commercial. Jake Lemmings, Robert Civil Engineering, agent for Buck Cavalier, Kaz Trav Properties LLC. Can we hear from staff please?
Yeah, we have one item before that item. For general business.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped us, do we have to actually make a motion or anything on this, or is this just approved?
No, no motions are needed, but this is just for your, for your information. The dates for the 2024 Board of Appeals meeting, so no necessary action, but for your, for your viewing.
Okay, noted. Okay, now we'll get on to apologize for that. And we hear from staff on ZV 5655.
Good morning, Maurice Postal Community Development. The applicant has submitted a parking variance application in order to reduce the number of required spaces at a proposed medical office building at 124 Carteret. As required by the zoning ordinance, a medical office must provide one parking space for every 100 square foot of total building footprint with no deductions allowed for non-medical areas like storage space, restrooms, or employee break rooms. The proposed medical office would be required to have 40 parking spaces under the ordinance. The applicant is seeking a variance to provide 20 parking spaces as that this site is shown on the MPC approved site plan that was in your packet. The applicant also has a possibility of a parking agreement for employees with the owner of an adjoining commercial lot at 3231 Cypress Mill. This is the stated hardship from the application, due to the unique shape of the property, we're unable to accommodate the office building parking requirements. However, the building is being designed for two providers. The first provider surgeon will have eight patients total, four in the AM, four in the PM. The second provider PA will have four to six patients per hour. For maximum prediction, there will be nine staff, six PA patients, two surgeon patients equalling, seven people, 17 people maximum parking at a given time. This allows for three extra spaces at any given time. The site, additional information, the site does currently consist of two separate lots on two tax parcels. The applicant has submitted an expedited plat to the county to combine the two lots. That plat has received all approvals and is waiting on a development approvals to be recorded. And also, the MPC reviewed the site plan for this project last week with the following conditions. The site plan shall become effective when parking variance application ZV 5655 is approved by the Board of Appeals and a parking agreement is completed if required and lot combination excess 5543 is recorded. This is a zoning map showing the two lots that will be combined on Carteret Road at the intersection of Carteret and Lakeview. And that purple parcel where it says possible additional employee parking, that's the parcel that the property owners had preliminary conversations with regarding a parking agreement for employees. This is the MPC approved site plan showing the 4,000 square foot building and the 20 parking spaces. This is the conceptual elevation for what the medical office building will look like. And this is a comparison of the requirements for medical office space against other kinds of commercial. See, medical offices, one space for every 100 square feet of total building area. General offices have a parking requirement of half that, one space for 200 square feet of total building area. But as you can see, other commercial businesses have allowances for, like I said, non-retail. Like retail stores, one space for each 200 square feet of retail floor area deducting, of course, storage space, restrooms, common areas, that kind of thing. Food stores have a requirement of double that, again, you can deduct other types of floor area. These are your possible motions, and if you do choose to approve this application, our suggested condition is the applicant shall complete a parking agreement with an adjoining neighbor to provide employee parking spaces. And the applicant and property owners are here today.
Okay, thank you sir. Anybody have any questions for staff?
No.
What was staff recommend, did staff recommend denial or approval, what was your recommendation?
We recommend approval with the adjoining parking agreement.
Anything else?
In the parking agreement, is that what, is that the convenience store?
No, it's a highway commercial property, really the owner can speak to it more, it's not a convenience store.
Okay.
Alright, no other questions for staff? Alright, we hear from the applicant please.
Hey, good morning, I'm Jake Lemmings with Robert Civil Engineering, also here with Mr. Buck Cavalier, the owner and user of the building, and Mr. Calvin Collins also here representing the project. So, I mean Maurice gave a really good overview, so what we're looking to do is put a 4,000 square foot, it's a dermatologist office, it'd be used by the Cavaliers. And so, like he's saying, we're trying to go to a 20 space, and per the maximum usage, we're around that 16, 17 spaces for worst-case scenario for parking. And Mr. Cavalier will get up in just a second and kind of go over the internal usage of the building and what we're expecting with the number of employees and patients, and how that's broken down, and to kind of back up the 20 spaces that we're showing here. We understand the possible, you know, the county's view of the additional parking requirements for the adjacent property, and so we have a signed agreement from them allowing for 12 extra spaces. So technically, we were showing 20 on site, and then we have 12 locked in with the possibility of adding more if needed. It's a, I believe it's a HVAC facility, is that right?
Well, he has actually a lay-down yard for another company there, he has about, you know, half an acre of land.
Okay, so it's an open gravel lot there to be able to have that additional parking on. And so, you know, with that, if you don't have any other questions for me, Mr. Cavalier can get up and speak for the kind of the internal usage of the building and kind of backing up how we're getting to that 16, 17 number.
Okay, anybody have any questions for?
Well, yeah, could you run into again, possible additional parking?
Yeah, so we've reached out to the owner next door, it's actually the property to the east. Yeah, so it's this, it's this area right here, so all this is open, an open lot. So you've got a building here in the front, there's a drive aisle, and then this would be the open parking area. So we've locked down an agreement with them for 12.
You say you locked it down?
We do, we have a signed agreement.
You have a contract?
We do. For 12 additional parking spaces and up to, we can get more if needed, but 12 is what we feel is sufficient, and then we got the 20 here already, so it's kind of puts us to that, you know, 32 if needed for employee overflow to park here and provide access to the facility, which will be located in this area.
So that's like a transferable contract?
I'm not sure how the contracts were, Mr. Cavalier could probably speak to that.
One question I do have, as far as access to the additional parking, is it via, if we can go back to the site plan? I'm assuming it's at the back of your parking lot, it's not like they're going to have to go out and around?
That's right, it would be, if I get cursor show up. So the shared parking would be here, and it's an open area now, and so they would just walk through the parking lot here. And employee access is going to be a back door in this area.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Separated by chain link fence with a walk-in gate.
Yeah, if you would, just please step to the podium, state your name and?
Hi, Buck Cavalier from Atlantic Shore Dermatology. Yes, so there's a new chain link fence that was just constructed really last week with gate walk-through.
Okay.
Because the HVAC place, Kerry Green's place next door is using the same, is doing the same thing. So, easy walking access. So Jake wanted me to present kind of internal use of the building to describe why I feel that the parking available is adequate. And a lot of thought and research went into this during the sort of the due diligence phase of looking for, looking for properties, so the reason for 4,000 square feet is because the nature of the practice that's going to be in there, if anyone's ever been to the dermatology office over there and seen my wife or any of the PAs, there's a, that's general dermatology, but the majority of the use here and the majority of the space requirement is going to be for surgical dermatology. So, a surgeon is coming in, and the reason that the square footage requirement is because surgery is not necessarily employee-intensive or large volume of patient-intensive, but it is space requirement-intensive for extra-large exam rooms where the procedures are done, a separate laboratory where slides are processed, big pieces of equipment that do that, microscope areas, etc. So, on a, and I kind of sketched out on a maximum usage basis, and this is not every day, but on a mac, on days when it's being maximally used, meaning the surgeon is going to be working on one side, and the general dermatologist will be working on the other side. The surgeon will see, generally they'll schedule four patients in the morning, four patients in the afternoon, on a staggered basis. So certainly by the time his third and fourth patient are arriving, the first patient is, at least the first patient is leaving. And the general dermatologist will see four at maximum, six per hour. We generally try to schedule every 15 minutes. So if they see, you know, 25 to 30 patients in a day, it's just got to be kept in mind, that's on a very staggered basis, starting at 8:30 through 4:30. So, given that, and employees and people working, we have the two providers, two doctors, two administrative people, that means one check-in, one check-out, one what's called a histotechnologist, that's the special tech for the surgeon, and then three nurses. So that's eight employees there on a, you know, on a regular full maximum usage day. And then, when I said four to five patients in a session for the surgeon, I maxed out and said three, there'll be three people parking at a time, that's on a sort of a worst-case scenario. And on the general dermatology side, there's probably at maximum five parking spaces being used up by those patients. If anyone's been, sometimes your patient, sometimes your appointment is two minutes and we're taking out sutures, or it's a recheck, and sometimes they take longer, but it is again on a staggered rotating basis. So when I sketched all that out, kind of worst-case scenario, and we did this all before we were even, you know, looking at sites, we were at about 17 on a day when the office manager is coming to visit for part of the day, maybe 18 spots maximum. So, in order to allow for even the worst, worst, worst-case scenario that we can't imagine happening on any sort of regular basis, which is why we secured the 12 spots, which was easy to do, very friendly neighbor, and it's walkable, as I said, with a, just through a chain like that. And that was, you know, the price was right, so that was a no-brainer to secure it, whether we needed or ever put a car in there or not, that was easy.
Okay.
Alright.
So the property is secured, I mean, is it, who owns the piece of property you're going to use? Green owns the?
No, Jimmy Arnold.
Okay. So that's back, that's back Peachtree?
He was Peachtree, now he's dynamic, right?
So?
So his office is right there also.
I guess my, if somebody else bought that piece of property and decided, no, we don't want you parking there, we're going to fill it up. And my only heartburn with it is, I understand what you're doing, it works perfect. Y'all don't, you're not going to be a dermatologist the rest of your life, you're going to retire at some point, and if they turn it into a beauty parlor, and they got 50 people, 40 people coming in there through the course of day, you got a lot more cars and then a problem. So it's kind of like, it's not what you, what you're doing is what you got the capacity to do in a 4,000 square foot building.
And what I, I would, when I address that, when we retire, our, our practice, if anyone's been, has come as a patient, you'll know we've, we are part of a larger national group called Forefront Dermatology. This is going to outlive us for a long time. I mean, they're the largest in the country, going to be a, I shouldn't use the word forever, but their existence is certainly going to outlive us. They just do not get into the real estate, they don't own any of the real estate, that's up to the locals, whether we lease from someone else or the physicians purchase the structure. So that will be a dermatology office in the, a lot longer than Ashley and I will be there, for sure.
Okay, but you kind of limit your growth. Where to kind of limit your growth, the site plan really doesn't allow for much growth, does it?
Well, that's in, we're only constructing a building for, at maximum, two providers. That would be the major restriction of growth, if we wanted to add more providers, we would need another building. So that's, that limitation is already built in.
Okay.
I'm good.
Anybody got anything else?
No.
Alright, anyone else, got anything like to speak forward? You knew we had to hear from you Calvin.
Calvin Collins with Anderson Collins Builders, we're the general contractor for the project. Just wanted to mention a few things, one is to reiterate what Buck said about the two providers and what they designed it for, especially the surgical side and the medical. And I think with his, you know, he, he needs to represent the right numbers because it's not against his, it's against his best interests actually if he doesn't. And so I think that's the biggest thing to take home with the whole understanding is that the surgical side essentially it's one and one-quarter a provider and not two, three, or four. So there's limits there. The other point I think to make is that really, the number is that we need to think about here is really 17. That's a worst case, I think average, he's at a 10 or a 12 on average with that flow. And so really, even the site plan without the lease that is secured really supports his practice healthily and effectively. And so I think that's just a, just a point I wanted to make there is that it was tastefully done on data through other dermatology offices around, as well as other county and city ordinances similar to that. This was done with a lot of thought, so.
Okay, there you go. Any other questions? Alright, no more questions for the applicant, going to the public comment sections. Anyone here to speak for or against this application?
On a side note, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if it was in our packet, I don't think it was, but I did get a phone call from the president of the Lakeview Homeowners Association, and they are 100% for this. Just letting you know that.
Alright, thank you. Alright, no other public comments, we'll close the public comment section and open it up to the board for discussion or a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve ZV 5655 as presented along with, they say they already have their, their condition for the parking agreement with the adjoining neighbor, so.
Have a motion on the floor, got a second, all those in favor? Alright, anybody opposed, motion passes, congratulations gentlemen.
Good luck with it.
Mr. Chairman, who was the second on that? Thank you.
Alright. Moving to next order of business. Variance request ZV, wait a minute. ZV 5627, 411 Kelsall Avenue, St. Simon's Island. Consider a variance to Glen County zoning ordinance section 701.5 to reduce the current front yard setback to 13.2 feet to allow the expansion of structure and a front porch on St. Simon's at 411 Kelsall Avenue, parcel 04-04097. The property is zoned R61 family residential, Pat Davis, agent for Charles and Jesse Harrison. Owners, may I hear from staff please?
Good morning, Christopher Carey, Glen County Planning and Zoning. Before you today, we have a variance for a front yard setback. The applicant does plan on building an addition on the rear and expanding the front porch on the front and moving it forward by additional .1 feet. The current porch is at 13.3 feet, and the variance request is to have the front setback at 13.2. The front setbacks are 20 in this district, and the home was built in 1943. Here's the parcel. And here is the survey showing the proposed development on the property. This is what it currently looks like. And here's a blow-up of what is proposed. So as you see, on the left is the current with 13.3 foot setback, and on the proposed, it shows 13.2 with the new front porch and proposed renovations. Here are your possible motions, and if you do choose to approve this, we would request that you approve it with the encroachment going no further than the existing porch at 13.3 feet. And the applicant is here as well.
Can you go back one slide? So, in the proposed, and this may be a question for the applicant. It says proposed porch 4.8 feet by 16.7 feet. Is that just on that side, do we know, or is that, like I said, may be an applicant question?
Yeah, that would be a good question for that.
And there's no, everything in the back looks like it's all clear, so we're good back there, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. That was fine, any other questions for staff? Okay, thanks sir. Move on if we can hear from the applicant please. Come to the podium, state your name for the record please.
Pat Davis, and I'm representing Mr. Harrison on this project. We're just basically, the house itself is a little over a foot into the setback already, so the front porch is already in the setback, we just want to just do one inch. I mean, I can adjust that to where we're not even coming out any farther than what the existing is right now. They just want to make it a little wider, so we had to apply for a zoning.
Got you, so the question I just asked, so looking at the proposed, it shows 4.8 feet by 16.7 feet, is that the new proposed porch? My question there is, when I rode by and looked at it, the distance from the corner of the house to that existing stoop can't be more than eight feet. Where's the other eight feet coming from?
For the 16?
Yeah.
From the one side of the step to the corner of the house?
Is that what it's showing, all the way to the other side of the?
Yeah, to that step, just basically where it is now, all the way over to the corner of the house.
Okay, so that 16.7 is corner of the house, so just including the existing?
Correct.
So is existing stoop staying where it is? As part of it?
Well, it's going to come out, but we're going to put a new one in, because we're going to recess the steps back in.
You're going to rebuild that whole step system?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so you're not going to build a 16.75 foot deck?
No, 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 that's including that area. Yeah, that's including the existing area.
Okay, alright, that was what was kind of confusing me is, like I said, when I looked at it?
Yeah, no, that whole thing's coming out, the rises aren't even right, there's no handrail, there's no nothing, and it's, yeah.
One quick, the, how many steps are going in that, three? What I'm getting at, with four foot eight, are you going to have enough room for a three-foot landing and your steps?
It should be, because there is now.
Okay.
There is currently, yes.
Is this just, is this going to be just a porch, or is it not going to be covered? It looks like the roof?
It's going to have a little covering on it, yes sir.
Okay, so you're just going to tie into the roof and extend it up to that end? Okay, so you're just going to tie into the roof and extend it up to that edge?
Correct.
Could we go back and look at the picture of the house?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, they didn't show the whole thing.
Right, the whole thing's going to be covered, mend and out to the front. But we're dropping, we're dropping.
Sixteen foot either, when I saw, when I saw the picture.
I'm sorry?
It didn't look like to me that area was sixteen foot either.
Yeah, it's not going any farther over to, I guess, the right side of the picture than what that post is right now. We're just incorporating that whole.
Gotcha. Okay.
So that's, I'm trying to get clarification, understand the, make sure we're on the same conversation using the words here. You're talking about, as I look at that picture, the further most white post on the right, it's going all the way to the left of the corner of the house that we don't see?
Correct, yes, sir.
It's going to be open?
It's all going to be open with covered, covered but open. Yes, sir.
So the steps, I mean, you may put in new ones, but it remains the same just like that?
Correct.
All right. And just another question of semantics. Why in the application was it added about the back addition? If that has nothing to do with the variance?
Well, the house sits in. It sits in the setback, and I was told that just because the house sits in the setback, you have to get a variance, whether it would be a, a, a.
Yeah, even if he did nothing to the front, he would still have to get the variance for the back because, because the house is in the setback in the front. The setback in the front has to, has to have a variance in order to do any construction on the house.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, sir. So, per the ordinance, we can't expand any non-conforming structures. You can renovate them, but if the, like, like, like this case, if the, if they were just wanting to put an addition on the rear, due to the front being in the front, encroaching upon the front setback, there would need to be at least an administrative variance applied for, to get the, to be able to build the, to expand the structure.
So while there's no variance needed to create the addition in the back specifically, so you don't have to ask for that, the variance in the front then would include that in the back? That's what you're saying?
In this case, yes.
Okay. Thank you, understand it. It's great.
One more question. Does, does the roof extend any further than it does now?
It is, yes.
So the, so it's going to come out to where the, I'd say, I guess.
The edge of the step is, correct.
To the front step?
Correct.
Further most step?
Correct.
And go all the way across?
Right.
Are you extending the gable out or extending that flat little shed?
It's going to be a gable, all the way across.
Oh, so the whole thing's going to be a gable?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for?
No.
The applicant? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Move on to the public comment section. Anybody here to speak for or against? If you would, please step to the podium, state your name for the record and.
Yeah, name is Paul Baumann. I'm actually the neighbor to the right. And I speak for it. I think it'd be a great addition. It's a, it's a great neighborhood. Everybody's putting a lot of improvements in their house. This would be a great one for, for Neil and Jesse as well, so. I know it's tough on all these because all these houses probably are already in the setbacks when everybody wants to put anything on them. But, but the improvement in these houses built in the forties is a, is a, is great for the neighborhood, so. So I speak for it.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right. Hearing none, we'll close the public comment section and move to discussion from the board. Comments or motions?
I'm good.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, have a motion on the floor to approve. We'll have, got a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Opposed? Yeah, we need, we need to approve it with the stipulation about no, not going any further than the thirteen point three.
Oh, yeah. I moved to make it, I moved to approve ZV five six two seven with the following condition, that the approved encroachment go no further than the thirteen point three.
Okay, so amend that, all right, so we're.
You're withdrawing your first motion?
As part of it, yeah, okay.
After we withdraw the first one, then this is the actual motion. The motion on the floor now is to approve with the encroachment that goes no longer than thirteen point three. So we'll have a second on that one. Second, all right. Now we're good. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. You got your parents. All right. Thank you all. And anyone have any further business? All right, we'll officially adjourn the meeting.